And to everybody in the audience, thank you for hanging in there. This is a problem that we need to resolve. I've heard a lot of problems, but I'm really happy because I heard some solutions, potential solutions. We're in it together. Jade Nauschew is part of the community. We are part of the community. We need to hold our feet to the fire and keep speaking up and keep seeking solutions. Please. Mahalo. So we are, I am Pat Grant, the CEO of Innovations Development Corporation. We have information up on the wall to show a little bit about who our team is. And I share this with you just to let you know what kind of people we've gathered as a team to work on this issue. I am retired from the state government service. I've worked for Governors Arioshia and Waihe'a on community relations with the Department of Education, with the Department of the Judiciary. I am now a dispute resolution person. I do a lot of mediation in my spare time. And I also work with the Charter School on the island of Oahu. So a little busy. Sitting next to me and with me, who will aid in the presentation, is Roberta Cabral. Roberta has been involved in the community for a long time. She was part of the team that originally established the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, something that we most of the time celebrate, sometimes we grumble about them too. We also have Lee and Keleu Irwin. Lee owns his own CPA firm in Honolulu. His son Keleu is the first Hawaiian working on Wall Street, so understands the financial part of it. Patricia Medina Talbert from Maui went away and served as a judge in New York, has retired, came back to work with us. Si Bridges, I think most of you know, is a cultural consultant. You all know Millilani Trask, who is also an Indigenous affairs consultant with us and has helped open doors to us, to Native peoples and programs. And you can see the rest of our team. I'd be happy to talk to you about that. We are a native-owned, native-managed company. Our priority, and we are a for-profit company, so we do look at profit also. But our mission, our devotion, we are answerable to our people. Not a multinational corporation. We don't send profits out of the, not only the state, but the country. We are answerable to our people. We're all local, born and raised. We, not a foreign-owned corporation. We're Hawaii-based. You can find us. We're accessible. We're available. And as Pat had stated, you know, our whole model is prefaced on the basis of being accountable to the community. And that's our commitment. We have established a protocol in New Zealand where we're working with the Native Maoris that are Ohana, really, to the Native Hawaiians. And so similar issues. And so we've walked through that exercise on understanding the complexities of, you know, developing resources that, as several people today mentioned, their ties to the First Amendment of the Constitution of Religious Rights. And we honor that and we respect that. Interestingly, when we went down to New Zealand at the request of the Maori to help them, being from Hawaii, we saw them on a path that was, you know, maybe 30 years before what was happening in Hawaii. And so we developed, with Millilani Trask, in the, with her work with Indigenous peoples, we developed a model that we think is unique to us. And we call it the Native-to-Native Community Collaborative Model, where we insist that the natives, that the people who own the resources be involved in the decision-making, be sitting at the policymaking table, and that we work out before any contracts are awarded, before any deals are signed, the rules and the laws and the policies that we insist on. And those include cultural protections, those include involvement of the local people in the projects, and not as the waiters or the janitors, but as prominent people involved in the, involved in the project. I remember somebody said to us, one of our partners or would-be partners, "Oh, so what? So how many Maoris are engineers in geothermal?" And our answer was, "None now, but there will be in six years because you're going to pay for scholarships to send them through the train." And that's our kind of representative of our attitude. Robby, you want to talk a little bit about our two projects?
We have two projects underway in New Zealand that were partners of several, two Maori trusts. It's on the North Island in the central area called Rotorua and Ko'ora. And that's the prominent area of the country where geothermal was featured on the North Island. The first project that we are involved with is called the Te Heke 8C adjoining blocks. And that particular project has just completed a very successful drilling campaign. I wish I had a photo that actually showed the protocols that's done in New Zealand. They lead, they lead the world in EPA. But we have a photo, and I'll bring it the next time we have a chance to have a presentation with you folks, but it shows lands grazing right there in the mountains. And the drilling not even 100 yards away from this. So the two can coexist. The key is the IP protocols, the technology, the engineering, the environmental issues to manage these things. I've been hearing all day for the last five hours, and I'm very thankful that I had the opportunity to hear the community and their complaints because it really makes us sit up and to listen that there's a process that somehow was not accomplished in terms of consultancy with community, which is a big part of development, a successful development. Somehow that's been skipped. We don't operate that way. We have, as I said, native partners. They've got their own strict protocols and cultural traditional practices that have to be adhered. You've got the community at large. And so I guess what I'm saying is, in our experience in New Zealand, working with very strict EPA, we're able to succeed. In our first project, we completed drilling. We're moving to a 75-megawatt project. The average project in the United States as an independent power producer in geothermal is between six and under 10 megawatts. So these are considered large-scale utility projects. The second project that we're in as well, called the Te Ahio Maui, is also with another trust, the AAD Trust. We're in partnership with, believe it or not, a company by the name of Eastland Energy, which is a for-profit arm of the municipality of the east coast of New Zealand on the North Island in the area called Gisborne. Their municipality, who owns the rights to easements, basically formed a community trust and then formed a for-profit arm that allows them to engage in development on behalf of their community. So our for-profit partner really is the community. And so in that particular project, we're ready to go in terms of permitting. We should be, within the next month or two, approved for our resource consents that allows us to go out and to construct. And our first phase of that project is 20 megawatts that will be operational in under 18 months. And then the balance of 50 megawatts that will come online in a total of five years. But the thing I want to emphasize about our experience there, under a very strict environmental process, is that we've been able to coexist with community, with natives, and with the natural habitat. And so I, hearing the stories today, it's been obviously a lack of consultancy with consultation with community. There's been a real lack of real strong dialogue to come up with a plan, a geothermal plan, that all could buy into, all stakeholders.
A plan that is correct for Hawaii. Tell you about New Zealand to let you know that we have some experience in this area. And we've gone through some problems and issues that they have, very similar to ours. But I think the message today very strongly was, we need to go, we need to go where the problem is, the potential project is going to be. We need to talk to the people. We need to find out, we want to hear the noise and feel the shaking and whatnot. And that's what we plan to do. So I'm really happy that you did this today because we also learned a lot. I talked to you about our Native-to-Native model. We're committed to that. We think it was what helped us work with the Maori who were new to us. And we kept thinking that they are us, you know, they're us. So don't do what we did in Hawaii, you know, let us give you the benefit of our experiences. But this is what we're committed to do. We have a cultural impact program in place so that we are not only preserving things, but also restoring things and making things accessible that weren't before. Looking at things that are environmentally sustainable and we're looking to honor the trust fiduciary responsibilities.
Okay, so we operate under what we call the Native-to-Native or Community Collaborative Models, that, as we said, that's designed to work into Indigenous communities. It's based on the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, a document that was ratified in the UN in 2007 by most of the major countries throughout the world. It recognizes that there is a development and improvement of resources in an equitable way for community, that there needs to be protection of cultural sites, environmental sustainability, and trust fiduciary principles.
You know, we talked about stakeholders or community collaboration, and we know that. So we know that the state, the county, the local community, and the Native Hawaiian community are important partners. And I tell you something else. As soon as people heard, because we've been working with international experts in the field, that we were starting up a project, we have had offers from companies, international companies to come in. They want to be our equity partners. They want to provide financing. We've got a lot of interest. But we're sitting here saying, "No, wait. If we partner with a company out of state, then any equity or any profits are going to go out of state. Our state needs the funding." That's why we come to the county. That's why we're talking to the state, the LNR, the HHL, OHA. We're saying, "Look, you know, we do have finances. We have the opportunity to raise the funds, but we need you guys to partner with us because we want that money to stay here and continue to help us in different ways." Kumpo is the target. They've got, you know, the target on their back. But they have to deal with PUC. They have to deal with their stakeholders. They have to deal with their shareholders. So it's up to us to go to PUC and fight for them too. It's a cockroach thing. We all need to be in there. We all need to understand the urgency and we need to work together. That's the only way it's going to work. And we are so far behind. We are so far behind. We need to go. Not so quickly that we bulldoze over people underneath, but we better get with it because we are so far behind. And I don't know about you, but my electric bills, you know, give me capatonic seizures every once.
We operate under a Pono model. What I was hearing today, which IDG fully agree, support, and we're focused on, it's not about 1,000 megawatts. It's about one step of designing a plan that stakeholders can buy into, that the community is comfortable with. It's about one RFP that's coming out for 50 megawatts per hico. We've heard you clearly today. We've heard council members, we hear the community. And you're right. This isn't about 1,000 megawatts today. It's about domestic generation for big island needs. And as we set the protocols in place, we can then proceed as all stakeholders are satisfied that we have a plan moving forward and how are the communities who are hosting this impacted by this. And we recognize that. So I wanted to acknowledge that and say, "We are hearing you. We are hearing you." What IDG is saying is that we're an alternative to what's available. And we want to stress the fact that we're Hawaii-based, we're part of the fabric, just like all of you guys. We're from here, our neighbors, our community. We're from the community. We're here to work with you. We've developed two successful models in New Zealand where, you know, our Maori partners and our Keewee partners are prepared to come to town and say, "The good that we've done to change the landscape, to bring and bridge the relationships between the broader Keewee community and Maori community to come together for the benefit of all." And that's what we're here to say. And there's special caretaking need addressing. And we recognize the whole issue of the Native Hawaiian protocols and Native Hawaiian cultural protections. And that's an area that our community needs to come together as Native Hawaiians. We need to sit down, kuka kuka, and address where we all come from. But I think we've got to respectfully agree to disagree on some issues and some approaches. We're never going to make everybody happy. But this is our culture. This is our history. These are our resources. These are our traditional practices. You know, I trace my genealogy and my bloodlines, 1820 in Pu'ho'iiki. My tutu man is Monomaka Iku'ua, Kahua'ena Opale. He was, I've talked to some of the families here in Hilo, the Leloi's and everyone who are Ohana, remind me that my tutu man was a practitioner of Tutupeli. You know, as late as the 1950s, I think he passed away in 1955. It's in our bloodlines. We are respectful. We want to hear what our brothers have to say and our sisters, and sit down and talk with them, and build that bridge of how we can come together to agree or agree to disagree. But do it respectfully and in a Hawaiian way. There's no need for hate. There's no need for anger. There's need for us to come together, definitely.
We call our project a four-legged stool, culturally appropriate, environmentally sustainable, socially responsible, and economically sensible. So we're looking at all those areas in order to develop a process. And I would say to you, let's find something that works and go for it. We can take a small step, but we need to take that step. I mean, it's been years. And in 20 years, how has that impacted us? How has that impacted this island? Did the electrical rates in Puna go down? Did the problems with the air quality and whatnot decrease? No, it hasn't. Why hasn't it? Why hasn't it? That's a question we have to ask. And everybody, every one of us in this room has to hold their feet to the fire, the people who are responsible for it. One thing we've got to do is look at already, what's already in place, and make sure those things are working. Make sure those evacuation plans are worth the paper that they're written on. Let's get moving.
Culturally appropriate. What IDG brings is oversight by native development partners. We have a Native-to-Native model that recognizes the rights of native people to participate in the development of their resources and to be at the table in terms of governance of policies. Cultural protections undertaken is in compliance with established judicial processes. Hearing Hawaii, that resulted from the landmark case for the Pele Defense Fund many years ago. Millilani Trask is one of our principals, was one of the attorneys. My Ohana, Yu'kona Louis, and Melody Mackenzie were lead attorneys on that case. Our project development agreements include cultural protection measures and protocols for all cultural resources, which include identification and preservation of all cultural resources, utilization of cultural vehicles and mechanisms for the project, and retention of project consultants and subcontractors for cultural protections, designation of project footprint, and implementation of litigation curator plans.
You notice this is a first leg on the stool because right now we're doing it as an afterthought. When there's a complaint, when there's a suit, then we pay attention to it. Well, that's not acceptable to us. If you want to work with us, if you want part of this program, that's the first leg of the stool. You need to commit to that.
Environmentally sustainable. Oil, gas-related issues and problems are not sustainable. Fuel toxicity and environment, greenhouse gas emissions, sego terra, fossil fuel cost increases, security issues, both politically, socially, and for our food security, are really big issues in terms of the existing oil-driven plants. Volatile and unpredictable oil, gas market pricing. I've heard conversations on it all day today. Energy self-sufficiency for each island via a diverse energy portfolio, mix of renewable generation, is what we believe to be the key of moving renewable energy forward.
You've heard about social responsibility. I say again, IDG's projects are committed to respecting of its cultural involvement. And how do you do that? By listening to the people and going where they are and finding out what's happening.
Benefit sharing with community stakeholders for project proceeds. Fair and reasonable costs to ratepayers. We don't support price fixing. We don't support not transferring all avoided costs to the community. And for those of you that don't understand what avoided costs are, basically you have two costs in a project and the right to a reasonable fair return under the PURPA law. And avoided costs represents an inflated cost to those returns. What's PURPA? PURPA is the Public Utility Regulated Policies Act, and it's a federal law. And under the law, it says that the ratepayer is entitled to a fair and reasonable rate. Well, I've got to ask the question. We've had geothermal for almost 20 years. Has there been benefits to the community? Has there been a fair rate? These are issues that we've been hearing all day today that seems to be a big issue that hinders the potential development of geothermal. I can hear the complaints. I understand the issues that people are complaining about geothermal, but I don't know if the people have yet had the benefit of sitting down with developers that have better technologies, a better protocol, and a better approach to development.
And we don't believe that baseball uniforms or even a school bus is enough, that they're making benefits off of our assets and resources. IDG, in one of our drafts, is proposing 2% of the profits to go into a community trust fund to be used as the community decides to use it. And, you know, to make that real commitment to involving the community and bringing benefits back, aside from hopefully lower-cost energy, safe energy, and participation in the development. Now, you've heard about the history. Geothermal's not new. It's been here in Puna for 20 years. In 1881, Kalakaua, who was like a technical genius, you know, he loved to look at these things, he went to the mainland and met with Thomas Edison and was intrigued by the brain of Thomas Edison and electricity and everything else. And he brought that, he brought that technology back. Our Hawaii State Capitol, the palace, was the first institution that had electricity even before the White House. Our people are with it. If we listen, we know the answers.
So the past mistakes and problems historically that's taken place was there was no consultation with community. The selection of the site and the technology at the time, the cultural access for gathering, worship, heritage protection, preservation, negative impact to native religious belief system, environmental issues in terms of exploratory problems, conservation options were not pursued, no benefit for the local consumer, the Native Hawaiians, and residents who are owners of this resource.
And before we leave, you know, we want to talk about the fact that we can benefit. It wasn't all bad, what has happened in the past. The Pele Defense Fund case sets standards for public and native stakeholders. We have laws now that assure those rights that people talked about being played around with and being restricted. Development of the subsurface estate, we found out, now need not destroy or damage the surface estate. We also know that geothermal is a minimal right that with the state law belongs to both the native Hawaiian and the public. So for once, we're talking about development in Hawaii where we don't have to be divided, the native against the non-native. This is something that can benefit the whole community, and that's how we're going to look at it. Before we leave, we want to make sure that everybody understands that there are also collateral benefits from geothermal besides just the production of lower-cost energy. There are uses for steam and energy that can help small business.
Under our plan, in collaborating with the community, we're looking to form a community trust, just as our partners in New Zealand has done. We would be committed, under a 50-megawatt project, to commit 2% of our gross income. This is before we pay taxes, pay for the capital, the costs of the money, pay for the actual project. We'd be committed to putting approximately $1.25 million of our gross for the term of, and lifetime of a project. And in New Zealand, the average project lifetime is 40 to 50 years. You know, we're talking about 150-megawatt project, committing to the community somewhere around $63 million as a means for community capacity building, to show serious commitment to the community that we view you as our partners. Fair and reasonable costs to the payers, job training and onsite employment, scholarships, a public-private partnership with state, utilizing state or possibly county lands or state use of mineral uses, and forming a public-private partnership where we all come together as stakeholders, where ultimately the development could become a publicly-held utility.
We, in addition to the benefits of discounted costs for the energy, we also have a whole lot of secondary small business opportunities. Our vision is creating a renewable energy industrial park where we could be using the steam for drying food. I think we're going to, we're going to show that. Timber drying, the steam from the geothermal plant can provide that to our people. In this island, when you need industry, you need jobs, we see a whole slew of opportunities here. Food drying, using the geothermal steam. Hot houses and greenhouses, climate control facilities, all things that other nations are using as offshoots of geothermal.
This is what we're doing in New Zealand. We're not just delivering electricity to their grid. We're working with their stakeholders to develop community capacity building. And as Pat described, small business opportunities by making a commitment of not just the community trust to provide community, you know, access to cash, which is one of the hardest things, especially in a bad economy, but also to make available steam at a discount and in some cases, under a partnership of some sort. That helps to drive the economy. So the issue is, Hawaii is in an energy crisis. And we've got $7 billion a year that basically go up for exports and importing oil. We've talked about all these issues today, and I won't belabor it, but we know there's a problem. The good news is Hawaii has an energy bounty. We have a vast and valuable renewable energy resource portfolio. The public-seeded lands trust assets, which are owned by the public and Native Hawaiian. There's geothermal minerals as a possibility, ocean resources, OTAC title, and wind, as well as solar. We're not saying that geothermal is the exclusive. We're saying that it's one of the answers for firm power. And it's a stark reality because while there's other things, it's yet to be commercially proven. And that takes a process. You know, I've heard comments about geothermal as outdated and it's, no, it's not. It's actually in its burgeoning stages. It's been around for a long time, but its technology has evolved. And it's become very good, and I hate to use the word clean energy, but that's what's being touted in the industry globally.
We believe that our kupuna and our gods have provided a wonderful opportunity for us. The sun, the ocean, Pele, you know, these things are things that we feel can be used if it's culturally appropriate for the benefit of the community and not as disrespectful or, you know, abandoning all of the principles that we stand in. Everybody in this room, probably if we polled you, we'd have, you know, maybe at least a dozen different religions or different belief systems. And we support those. We support that. We don't disrespect Tutupeli. We revere her. And so we need to talk to those people that are Pele worshippers, those people that are Christians, those people that are Buddhists or whatever, and get the best ideas from these people and continue to use that to benefit the community as a whole. That's where we are. So we ask, where is the County of Hawaii in this scenario? We've taken the liberty, little mahaloa, to create a list of questions that we'd like you to ask before you consider any proposal for geothermal. And in many cases, it raises the questions that were raised in the hearing today. And we need us to ask those questions before we go any further. There have been mistakes in the past. They're not being corrected. The HELCO has tried to correct some of them. They're not. They're not being corrected. Okay, well, let's figure out what these things are, and let's be aggressive and take steps to correct the problems that we already have. We have an evacuation fund. We have rules in place to help these people. Why aren't they working? Let's go find out, and let's do it. So take care of what we know about now and then use that to move on to the future. That's going to be the best for all of us, native Hawaiian and non-Hawaians alike. That's what we ask. We have had several meetings on the big island, as well as Maui and Oahu, and we surveyed the people that were at the... At those meetings, I have a summary of the surveys in your packets. 95% support of geothermal was the lowest number in Hilo, 100% in Waimea, 100% in Kona, 100% from labor groups, 97% support in Kona, our first meeting, which was something, you know, maybe it was who was there at the meeting? I don't know, but we had... We were amazed. Their support was based on the model that we offered. Their support was made on the promises that we made about being responsible culturally, socially, economically. And we present ourselves as accountable to that promise. Thank you very much.
First of all, colleagues, let the record show that Mr. Yoshimoto's voice has deserted him, and he's deserted his chair too for a few minutes. So I'll be the chair of this particular meeting for the balance since I'm vice chair. Thank you, Ms. Brandt, for the explanation. Do appreciate that. Council members, comments? Mr. Palago? No, Mr. Onishi. Go ahead first.
You mentioned about this survey. Hold on.
Just get on my... Thank you.
You mentioned about this survey that was conducted. When you first mentioned, like, Kona, I heard some kind of... Kind of moaning, kind of thing.
Well, there was 100 people at the meeting. There wasn't 45,000 population that's from Kona.
And where was the meeting held at?
It was on April 9th at the Pahoa.
Where?
2011, April 9th.
No, no, no. Where was it?
The Pahoa, right center.
Okay.
We were surprised.
And then your Hilo meeting, how many people were there?
About 75.
And then you had your Waimea?
Yeah, we had about maybe 30.
30. And then you had Kona?
It was a big one. It was like 100, yeah, 170.
And that was like right in Kailua Town, or you had like...
So we had it at the high school, near Kiala.
Okay. And then your last one?
Labor groups.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Palago, any comments?
We know that as people learn more, there will be more questions, but are we ready for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt, then. Mr. Palago, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, sir, except I wish to continue listening in, and I'll be contributing very soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on this particular... Go ahead, Mr. Yagon.
Thank you very much, Pat. And thank you so much, well, for being here today. I really appreciate it. You know, normally when we talk about geothermal, you know, normally we talk about PG. And that's the only entity normally, and that's actually being talked around. So when I have an opportunity to hear about this proposal, thank you, Ms. Cooper, for coming to my office and, you know, talking about this issue. I thought it was extremely important that we provide you an opportunity to actually, obviously, introduce yourself to the community during the meetings, but introduce yourself to the council and, I mean, this is televised, you know, I say to the Congress of Hawaii. So I thought that was very important, to make people understand that in terms of geothermal and entities out there that are in, you know, this arena, I want to make sure that we are not going to see who you are and meet you. And I will tell you that I did do some research on your company, and I did, you know, research all the folks that are on your board. I just want to say that I was extremely impressed with the people that you put together to represent your company. I think, you know, for me personally, and putting aside the whole issue of geothermal, you know, I think it's important that when you do, you know, try to push it, whether it's a technology or a company, and work with the community, it's important the people that we view with us to be the people that, first of all, I think are upstanding people. And I just want to say, just based on the people that's on your board, I thought it was absolutely fantastic. And so I just wanted to say that personally, because I did make sure that I know who I'm talking to, so I wanted to say thank you for that. But we are going to continue discussion, obviously. This is something that's very important to this island. I continue to invite you to be part of this discussion. And more important, I think, be part of discussion where we are going to be including the community to make sure that their voices continue to be heard and be part of the process.
Now, we have a lot of information, but we have a lot to learn. So we appreciate the opportunity to hear from the community too, and I'm going to make some appointments to go and talk with some of them.
And obviously, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, in regards to what was discussed with this particular proposal, the thing that many people out there do talk to me about when it comes to geothermal development is whether or not that is going to equate to a reduction in the electrical bill. You know, this is the first time I've heard that, you know, your project is equating or will be equating to lower electrical bill costs for the people of Congress of Hawaii. So I found that as refreshing information, something I'd never heard before.
Well, it's pretty standard. You know, in New Zealand, we're paying somewhere around, I think it's $80, $80 a megawatt is the actual rates to generators. It's far more significant here. Obviously, costs here, you know, it's higher here in Hawaii and whatnot. What we're just trying to establish is that there's another way of doing that, and there's other approaches, and that we're basically a Hawaii-based group doing geothermal internationally, and we've seen success with geothermal projects. The transaction come together, and it's just moving beautifully, and that it can be done here. But I think it needs to present a whole, you know, some options for the community to see that, you know, it's not just, we're not married to one technology. We're developers, and we're going to find the best technology based on the exploratory. If anything, as a local group, we offer being the gatekeeper. We may end up in a partnership with an ORMAT or somebody like an ORMAT, we don't know. But our job is to do all the things that we said that we would do, and that's what we've done in New Zealand with Maui and enriching the communities, and we think we can accomplish it here.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none. We have on the floor Communication 651.
One brief, sir. I'd like to take this opportunity, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Palago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like, first of all, to thank Director Brandt for your presentation and for bringing forward your group for this discussion, and Director Cabral. Thank you both very, very much. I wish too mahalo to the both of you and to your team. What we have is a great difficulty in that there are corporations that appear to be forcing issues onto our community and using this county council as a venue for that debate to happen, and it's a very difficult job that we all have. The other thing, we have government that has been very, very forceful also in promoting some of their initiatives, but we don't have enough of an opportunity to bring in the people's voice. And that's what I see you capable of helping us with. The resolution lies not only in the power generation aspects, and I like what Ms. Cabral said in that it may be that you will not be the power developer or the power generator, but may help facilitate that cause. It may not be the current PVG or ORMAT that we're looking at as a power generation source. But we see that the developer of geothermal is only one part of the problem. We need help not only to resolve who the developer will be in respect to providing geothermal power, or where and when it would be situated, and how strong a facility it would be. But we deal with other aspects also, and that is the community benefit package. What are the benefits to the package if our native resource is tapped into? There's also a thing that we need to consider that's not been covered fully, and that is the creation and generation of power is only one aspect of the whole cycle of geothermal power in that we still need to move the power by transmission lines into... And that transmission system, again, will be another contractor that they... Some people only do development of power. Other people do transmission of power. And from there, there's some technical aspects that we need help with, is once the power is marshaled, where do the distribution points and the reconversion points happen? So the issue is a very complex one, and it gets much more difficult. But it brings to all of us that there needs to be discussion along the full range and spectrum of this process, and that's what we lack and need help with. And that's what I see institutions and agencies, as yourself, providing for us, that means of reasonable and rational discussion and debate. I just wanted to share that, that our challenge only begins with if geothermal is reasonable and viable, but there are other issues that we need to discuss that are part of the spectrum of renewable and sustainable energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palago. I don't see any further lights. Let's forward the vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Mr. Palago.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Yagon.
Aye.
Mr. Yoshimoto.
Aye.
Chair Hoppin.
Aye.
You missed me.
Mr. Akata. Please don't miss Mr. Akata. Over there on the side. Missed him, sorry. Chair Hoppin, you have eight eyes. Thank you very much. Communication 651 is filed. Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you, folks in the audience. Been a long meeting for this particular committee. It's 4 o'clock. We're about three hours behind. We have several other committees to go through, and we'll take a five-minute break. Wait a minute. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Why do you use me to promote them, huh?
Yeah, bro.
What do you want to tell the world? Because we're still on the internet. Call it, go. Go out there, go.
That's the Boston advertising. What? Poly defense. Now that everybody, their presentation is given all over the world, Pelle Defense, they're using as a marketing tool, letting everybody think that we're okay with this. They have to take it off.
They decided you, they decided Pelle Defense.
It's a marketing tool.
The number one, the number one.
Come tell us what it's really is, yeah?
They should have used that.
Yeah.
This is your image, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't want to be part of this.
They have to remove that.
I know.
Because now, when we go and give our voice, you can say, "Well, I thought you guys were for this," because of their marketing tool, advertising.
Talk to him too. Go talk to Alan.
Alan who?
Alan McNair, everybody's friends. He's a good guy. Good guy. I gotta pull my power plugs. Hold on. Hopefully, we'll have enough power to get the aftermath going on here. People's irritated. Big time. All right, I'll get my bag. I'm gonna go outside. Talk to the people.
Oh, actually, it doesn't... Well, it does. I've got other people here.
I will talk to you. I will talk to you. You have to do that. And I will talk to Millie Lani, but I will tell Millie Lani you would like to please do.
I am...
I'll only help you in the care.
Poli Kapu, and I would like you to remove that. That is not true. You're marketing Pelle Defense Fund. You were to promote your ideals.
No, our team is involved in that. They were free to...
Poli Kapu won this war.
I'm not going to have this conversation. What's up with the attorney's wife? She's right there. You can tell him, you can tell him to come over here. Be happy to tell him.
We are the representatives of...
Yuwena Louis, Melody McKenzie, Millie Lani Trust. Millie Lani is not part of Pelle Defense Fund. She doesn't... She is no track to be using that.
They took it at all. They took it to the state.
Not at all. They took it to the state.
Not part of Pelle Defense Fund. You're using Pelle Defense Fund. Talk to Millie about it. We need you to remove that because we are promoting otherwise.
I'll talk to Millie about it.
We are promoting this otherwise. You have to take our name off.
Yeah, that was disgusting.
Give me your number.
We are a legal entity. Pelle Defense Fund, and I will have your marketing tool.
I need support. Millie Lani is not part of our...
Millie Lani won the case.
Millie Lani, you have a... And Melody McKenzie won the case.
No, 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 no. Poli Kapu.
It doesn't make it okay.
It doesn't make it okay for using our name.
I don't need you to tell me about my culture. I don't need you to tell us about our culture.
I'm telling you about my culture.
I don't care.
You're going to New Zealand for that.
Yeah, well, are you touching me?
I'm not touching you.
Are you touching me?
I'm not touching you.
You keep your hands to yourself.
I'll tell you this, right?
Oh, I touch you guys well. I'm good. You're good with the Hawaiians.
Wow. You know what? You're not...
You're not... You should keep... I'm not a Hawaiian. You told me I'm not part of this. Yeah. You're not part of Pelle Defense. Don't use Pelle Defense.
Should it be? Not for...
Millie Lani is not part of Pelle Defense Fund. She has no right to do that.
I never saw it ever.
I've never... She is not.
They got our pictures up there like they saved the forest. That's not cool.
I'm gonna have so easy face and chew us all down here. That's not cool. That's not cool.
Hey, Pelle Defense Fund off.
That was disgusting.
And you got our picture for the rainforest. I never saw it.
It's about you sell out all our land.
Sell out, sir.
Oh, big time, sister.
Don't insult my grandfather.
It's insulting. I spat a piece of that. No, no, you don't respect Hawaiians.
I should do. I should remove it.
I sell it.
I don't sell any of it.
Your friend.
Take Pelle Defense Fund off you guys. Come on.
Pelle Defense Fund.
That was disgusting.
Off of your bullshit platform.
That wasn't cool. That's not cool.
You're saying you need it. Hey, you use your own studio on it.
No. That's the truth, yeah. Can I do Pelle Defense Fund for your marketing?
It's your marketing tool.
It is Pelle Defense Fund.
It was the Pelle Defense Fund.